Good evening, everyone. Welcome to June 13th Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to just go around the table here and introduce ourselves. How's that? Starting with...
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil Devanz is Selectman.
Chris Nato.
Richard Bean.
Gail LeBruck Recording Secretary.
Scott Callender.
Barbara Griffin.
Ryan Hanson.
Simone Duhamel Alternate.
My name is John Heikel. I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. Welcome Scott Callender to the Board as an alternate. We saw him in this evening before the meeting. So, welcome. Thank you all for coming this evening. First thing we want to discuss on the agenda tonight is the minutes of May 23 meeting. Has anyone would like to make a motion or have any changes? Should make some motion to approve. Seconded by Phil. Any discussion on that? Any questions? Take a vote. If all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Barbara abstains. Thank you very much. This evening, we're going to have the sitting members this evening, which is Simone, Brian, Barbara.
Simone is an alternate.
I'm sorry. Simone is an alternate. She feels like a member. She's here all the time.
She hasn't missed a meeting.
That's right. Exactly. Right?
Wait a minute. I got made fun of for missing a meeting at the beginning before we went on the air. She has missed a meeting, just for the record.
Or two.
So, is Simone the appointed voting alternate?
Simone will be the appointed voting member for now.
For the minutes?
For the minutes. Yes. Yes, for the minute vote. And Phil, Chris, and Mark, Richard, will be...
Well, how many regular members do we have?
Seven.
Seven. Six. Seven.
Six.
Including John? You're just missing Mark.
Including John, the seventh one.
Mark's not here, so Simone is sitting in. Right, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure it was only one, not two, up in this.
That was a trick question, Phil. Nice try.
Six and Phil. Yes, thank you. Well, we got that straightened out. Good. We got the minutes out of the way.
Check that off.
We are not going to review the rules and procedures this evening. They still want to be discussed. If it's at all possible, we'd like to have all discussions done, so we can discuss them by next meeting. If that's not too soon, but hopefully it isn't, and we can just discuss the rules and procedures next meeting. We saw in Scott. And get to the first one. We have a letter from Attorney Drescher regarding telecommunications applications. Copies mailed. Would you like to...
I think if we can just discuss this during the items on the agenda, I think that'd be fine.
Okay. So, then we'll go right into acceptance of road maintenance bond. And remind everybody to turn their phones back on before they go outside.
Okay. So, I put this road maintenance bond on your table tonight. It's for Adamout Ridge, and that is a subdivision in the northeast corner of Goffstown. And basically, they have completed their Phase 2A portion of their roadway. The selectmen have accepted it. And so, the performance bond that was in place is basically requested to be returned to the original surety provider, Dennis DeMers. And if you look on the third page, I've got a memo that sort of outlines what I'm talking about. But basically, there's a $30,902 and $0.04 left over on the current bond that we had in place for the surety on that road. And once the selectmen accept a roadway, then we move to a maintenance, a two-year maintenance bond. And so, Scott Bucier has provided a new maintenance bond for the two-year period after which the acceptance occurred. And that's before you tonight for acceptance of the bond. And that new bond is 10% of the original cost of the full bond. And that's in the amount of $18,804.57. So, basically, tonight, I'm just recommending that the Board release the remaining $30,902.04 from the surety bond that was previously accepted by the Planning Board on June 9, 2011, as a surety bond for the remaining improvements. And then, subsequent to that, accept the new maintenance bond, which he's actually supplied a cash check for, in the amount of $18,804.57, to be held until February 25, 2015, which is two years from the time that the selectmen accepted the roadway. This is, there's a little bit of a delay here because it took a while to get the bond language all worked out with Mr. Bucier. So, anyway, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Phil.
Brian, I noticed that you have a copy of the memo from Alex.
Yes.
Dated January 10. And you have in your memo to the Planning Board dated June 13 about the acceptance that the selectmen accepted the road as a town road.
June 13?
No. Your memo is dated June 13.
Oh, yes.
To the Planning Board.
Okay.
That states that the selectmen accepted the road as a town road.
Mm-hmm.
On February 25. What I would request is that every time you bring one of these to the Planning Board, you also bring a copy of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen when they accepted it. And the reason why I say that is there are many times that the Board of Selectmen will accept the road, and it'll be subject to making sure that there are no occurrences in the right of way.
Okay.
And the reason why we do that is in case there is. The road doesn't get accepted until then. And the fact that they, I mean technically, they accepted it, but there was a subject to. And we don't know without those minutes if that was a request of the Board.
Okay.
Or a subject to. So, we're assuming that it was accepted. We have nothing between that point in time to now that, from Public Works, that says that they checked, and it complies that there's nothing in the right of way.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was. I mean, I can pull up the selectmen's minutes and try to take a look, but...
Well, I don't think it's necessary, but I would, if there's a motion to accept it, I would suggest that the motion be subject to, that there's no encumbrances or all the requirements of the Board of Selectmen will met.
In regards to the release or the acceptance?
Well, I wouldn't want to release the bond unless all the requirements were met by the Board of, that subject to's, if there were any, by the Board of Selectmen, which is usually a check to make sure that there's no encumbrances in the right of way.
Okay.
Yeah. I can have DPW or somebody verify that, and we can make it a condition of the release of the bond.
I mean, I'll make that motion. Since the request is to release it, subject to meeting all the requirements.
So, what you're moving is number one, with the additional language, subject to satisfaction of any requirements of the Board of Selectmen in acceptance of the road.
Correct.
Because technically, you may not have accepted the road yet.
That's right.
In process.
And Brian, the reason this is before us is because the person whose bond it is, has called up Brian.
Oh, Mr. DeMers has called up.
He's called up Brian. And there's no paperwork, no...
Right. Of course.
Okay. I get it. Last second, that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Phil.
And we have a voting alternates. It's still going to...
It's going to be Simone. It's going to be a voting alternate until... Changed. And seconded by Barbara. Any discussion on that? I understand. Good catch, too, Phil.
In the future, I don't have any problem putting the minutes in there. I can do that. That's easy. I know the selectmen just did that for a different road that they accepted, so, I mean, that would show up in that one, for sure. I don't recall if that happened on this one or not.
Right. No more discussion or questions on that motion? All understand it? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? Seven, zero.
So, that was for the release of the bond?
Yes, of the bond.
So, then the other one is to accept the new maintenance bond that you have in front of you. It's in the back of that package. I actually had the town attorney come up with a template that we can use for any maintenance bond, because in the past, I think it's always been a reduction of the current bond that we had in place, and it never really matched a maintenance bond for a two-year period. And the language in there is a little bit more specific toward that type of scenario. So, I had him draft that up, and now we've got a template that we can use for future bonds in this regard. So, he's reviewed this and had no issues with it.
I'll make a motion to accept the new maintenance bond in the amount of $18,804.57 to be held until February 25, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Barbara, seconded by Richard. Want to speak on that motion? Okay. Any questions? Everybody understand it? Take a vote on that one?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous, seven, zero.
And then, Mr. Chair, just if you can make sure to sign the, there's a road tracking, there's actually two road tracking forms. There's a line at the bottom there for Planning Board Chairman to sign, which has a little X next to it. And I'll put those in the file.
Wait. That's what they just said. This is the...
Pass that to Brian, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
You should have Phil check it for completeness.
I'll check off if it was accepted.
We've got a conditional use permit. Map 3, Lot 41. Conditional use permit hearing and a request to waive site plan review. Requirements for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T owner St. Anselm College for a proposal to co-locate three antennas and six radio heads to existing antennas on the existing water tank and to add equipment cabinet to existing concrete pad. The center of the proposed antennas will be installed at a height of approximately 117 feet on the existing water tank located at 100 Anselm, St. Anselm's Drive in the Residential 2 Zone. Brian, would you want to tell us on this one?
Yeah. So, Mr. Perry is here tonight representing AT&amp;T and requesting a conditional use permit and waiver of the site plan requirement to co-locate three antennas, six radio heads on this existing tower that you mentioned. It's the water tank, really. And there, as we, most of us know, there are many antennas already on that water tank. So, we've seen these applications before. And basically, this request is a little bit different than most that have come through because this one's asking for a waiver of the site plan requirement, which basically, they're asking us as a planning board to make a determination that this project doesn't have any significant change in the physical dimensions of the tower, which is language that shows up in a federal law. Basically, it's the 6409, Section 6409 of the Federal Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012. So, this just happened last year. New laws in regards to telecommunication facilities and basically trying to make sure that they are allowed to exist and allowed to go through. And so, basically, that's the gist of this request, to grant a conditional use permit as our zoning ordinance requires, and then waive the site plan requirement, which, number one, is they're asking for the waiver of the site plan because it's, they're claiming that it's a burden to pay the fee, which is associated with the site plan application. And that it's also, they felt that the requirements of site plan were overly burdensome in its, you know, cell tower facilities. So, basically, my recommendation is, I don't believe this does make a change to the physical dimensions of the tower. I mean, you're adding a few small antennas on an existing huge tower. So, my recommendation is that we approve that conditional use permit and waiver of site plan. I can go through my recommendations in the back of the report. We have to determine that there's no regional impact. Just for your information, we, in ahead, in advance of this, we also notify, based on our development regulations, we notify all the surrounding cities and towns around Goffstown anyway. That's just because, you know, a cell tower has some statutes that require notification to surrounding towns. And then, accept the application as complete and ready for review, hear the applicant's presentation, conduct a public hearing, and then resolve any remaining issues. And then, determine, my recommendation is to determine that the proposed project will not have a substantial change to the physical dimensions of the tower or base station. And that will be sort of the determining factor to help us then go forward and approve the conditional use permit. And I think I left out to waive the site plan on there. I put it at the bottom. Eight, number eight is waive the site plan, subject to a few findings, and that the applicant provide a written engineer certification that the tower structure being located on will safely accommodate the antenna without risk to public safety. Notify the public, the fire department, when the proposed construction will, for the activity, construction activity for these antennas is to be done. And that any waiver of the development regulations requires a planning board finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to spirit and intent of the regulations. And that specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. Now, you brought up at the beginning that Attorney Drescher has a letter that he wrote, and I copied that to the Board. I also actually have shared this with the applicant, so he's aware of it. And that we discussed this with the attorney that was acceptable. And so, I mean, basically, the attorney is telling me in this that, you know, this does have some merit to this, and that the Board should make it, make some type of determination, or the town in some fashion should make a determination that whether or not this has a substantial change to the physical dimensions, because then that determination is really going to be the one that helps us move forward with the rest of the application process. I don't know if, I know you had a chance probably to read that as you were reviewing your packets. Hopefully, you did. And so, if you have any questions, we can talk about those or...
Barbara.
Doesn't C have to come between 1 and 2?
On the recommendations?
And isn't A to A and B really a condition of approval?
Yeah.
Because we can't accept the application as complete and ready for review until either it meets all our requirements for an application, or we grant a waiver. And we're requesting that we waive the development regs in regards to a site plan, so I think we need to make that finding initially at this point, and then hear the application.
So, you're saying waive the, you're talking about waive the site plan before doing the rest?
I think we have to. Which is how we've done it. I think what happened is it got tied up with the other things that you need, and I understand why you put it together like this. But we need a recommendation from you that the application is complete and ready for review. Technically, under the development regs, it's not, because it lacks a site plan. So, we have to waive the condition of the development reg in regards to the site plan.
Okay, I see.
I think it was just the way you put it together, because usually, when you have these recommendations, you have the waiver.
Try to put them in the right order.
You put them in the right order. So, I just want to bring that to the Board's attention when this proceeds, after somebody might make a motion to determine that there's no regional impact, that the next motion really needs to be a waiver of the development reg in regards to the site plan. And then, should it go forward, that A and B would be a condition subsequent to the conditional use permit. I think that's how the motion is going to need to go if this application is successful.
I have questions. Phil.
And where do you suggest that we handle C?
Between 1 and 2.
Okay.
Between 1 and 2.
Just one other note. This applicant came in originally requesting a building permit application and wanting to basically circumvent the planning process. And we told them, well, you've got to go through the planning process. But it kind of took us a while to actually make that determination, because when they asked, well, we want to skip the planning process, I said, well, I'll take a look at this federal thing, and I'll check with our attorney. And that's sort of what generated this attorney letter. And so, it took a little bit of time to get to that point. So, the time that they actually submitted their building permit application was like Mar- March 14th, is that right?
How was it?
March 14th was the first one, which, there's another federal law out there that basically talks, it's called the shot clock, and it gives cities and towns basically 90 days to make determinations on such things as telecommunications facilities and antennas and that type of thing. So, we are basically right at the door of the end of the 90 days. And it's taken us this long to get to that point. I just want to let the Board know that, you know, this decision tonight is important to consider that part as well.
Are there any...
I actually don't think the time limit would apply if the original application was a building permit, but we're not going to get into it, because I don't really see a lot of issues.
And there's no risk of butters asking why they weren't, or were they?
Butters were notified.
Notified.
Yes. So, if there are no butters here, that probably means they don't have an opinion or couldn't come, or I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that this project has no regional impact.
Second.
Motion from Barbara, seconded from Richard. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Seven, zero.
I'll make a motion to waive the requirement of the development regulations for a site plan, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would be, would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Motion from Barbara.
Second it.
Second from Brian.
And it's all because I'm dying to know how high it's really going to be.
100.
I know it's 117, but I don't know whether it's going to come over the water tank or exactly how high it is to everything else that I want to hear.
Any discussion on that motion?
Who's drawing?
Questions? Everybody understand it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Barbara, okay.
Motion to accept the application as complete and ready for review.
Second.
Motion from Richard to accept. Barbara, second. Discussion, questions? All in favor on that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? Yes. No questions? Okay. Let's have the applicant, I think it's, please state your name.
My name is Edward Parry. It's P-A-A-R-E. I'm outside counsel to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is operated by AT&amp;T, and that's how I refer to the company. That's who you pay your cellphone bills to, and so we'll proceed in that fashion. I'll answer the direct question first. No, it will not be above the water tank. If you take a look at the plans, which we submitted as part of our eligible facilities requests, we call these these days. On Sheet A2, you'll see the current configuration in a cross-section on the left of AT&amp;T's antennas, and then you'll see the new LTE antennas that are being installed. And I'd like to give you just a couple of minutes about what LTE is, in case you have not had your sites upgraded by both AT&amp;T and that begins with a V.
4G.
For, what's that?
You're talking about 4G.
4G. Well, it's called enhanced 4G, because right now, you get some 4G. I don't know how much is up here, but, you know, the G is based on speed. Yeah, like that. LTE is this, you know, supposed lightning-fast, long-term evolution, is what it stands for. So, it'll be enhanced 4G. You should get broadband cable-type speeds on all those wonderful devices I see sitting around the table.
When are they going to fix my phone coverage?
You should absolutely give me your address then, so we can see when we're coming. But this project is upgrading existing AT&amp;T sites. We're not coming through building new installations. We're trying to use what's there. It is data service at this time. I think it will eventually all convert to voice. But this is the new wave, and I think you'll see on every wireless site you have in town that there'll be an LTE upgrade by all of the carriers eventually. So, if you take a look at the tower on the right at St. Anselm, we're adding one antenna to each of the three sectors. If you're familiar with these, the antennas propagate 120 degrees, so to create those blobs that you see of service and gaps in service. One LTE... We're not coming through building new installations. We're trying to use what's there. It is data service at this time. I think it will eventually all convert to voice. But this is the new wave, and I think you'll see on every wireless site you have in town that there'll be an LTE upgrade by all of the carriers eventually. So, if you take a look at the tower on the right at St. Anselm, we're adding one antenna to each of the three sectors. If you're familiar with these, the antennas propagate 120 degrees, so to create those blobs that you see of service and gaps in service, one LTE antenna will be put in each of those sectors to provide that 360 degrees. As part of the LTE, we switch to fiber rather than the big coax cables that you currently see, which is why you'll see a lot of direct current electricity issue cables that will be running. Behind those antennas are what's called remote radio heads. You'll hear a lot about these also. In this instance, there are two remote radio heads, which will go behind the antennas on the mount. This basically moves the all of the electronics down in the base station up closer to the antenna, so that it can -- it will lose less coverage and produce a faster signal. There is a rack of antenna -- rack of equipment that'll go down on, in this instance, the existing concrete base. So, in this instance, we're not expanding the compound, we're not increasing the height of the tower, we're not doing anything to the water tank. My guess is if you went out there and looked at it a couple of weeks ago, and if we went out and did the work, you'd have probably have trouble seeing, you know, what changed, actually. I would like to point out a couple of things about infamous section 6409, and I spent a lot of time in our letter. You know, what we're trying to do, it's a statute that's relatively new. It's only, you know, February 2012, and this is probably your first instance, based on the advice I saw from your counsel, but we've been rolling this out, you know, throughout New England. And it doesn't say you don't have jurisdiction any longer over wireless. What it does say is if we're coming in to modify an existing installation, not build a tower, not put new antennas on a structure, that Congress and the federal government have decided that it's important that these things be deployed quickly, that they be approved, period, which is why we go through an administrative process. That's why we sought the building permit, because that's the guidance that the FCC has provided, go through an administrative process. As things got a bit backed up and delayed, I talked to your counsel, Mr. Drescher, who referred me to Brian. I understand it doesn't exactly fit within your regulations. You wouldn't have been prepared for that, but what we really are asking for is a determination by some town official. We're hoping the building inspector would do it, or Brian, or somebody in administrative capacity. We're here just to get that finding that we're not going to substantially change the tower or base station. And if we get that, then we know we fit within the 6409. We should be able to get our building permit. And so, we did build in some time, and in my letter, I granted some additional time to alleviate the shot clock issues, which actually I think on one of these sites we bumped up against yesterday. So, the idea is to explain what's going on, to give you a sense of what we're installing, that we're not putting up a new tower, that we're not adding to the height of either the water tank or the tower in the next hearing, and to seek your determination, so the town feels comfortable that you've satisfied -- we've satisfied the standard in some administrative -- town administrative eyes, so that we can go to the building inspector and get our building permit. So, that's kind of the gist of what we're doing. I think you're going to see that our installations are pretty innocuous, and AT&amp;T is already installed. It's not a new array, it's an existing array. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's, you know, there's not a lot to it. I know there are lots of legal issues here, and I'd be happy to explain to the extent I can.
It's amazing, sir. Yes, Barbara?
So, is this almost more in the function of a booster rather than a new function?
No, it's a new technology. It's going to be, you know, enhanced 4G, so it'll be a different antenna, different service.
So, why does the existing UMTS, GSM antenna remain?
That's a good question. We still have 2G and 3G, which people operate with. They don't necessarily buy data plans, they don't necessarily have phones that are going to accommodate 4G. The prediction by many, I mean, who knows, you know, where things are going, is that eventually 2, 3, and 3G will eventually phase out, and if that occurs, then you'll see additional changes to the antennas. But at this point, we've got to support each of the services, 2G, 3G, and 4G. So, they'll remain, GSM will be used for voice still, LTE will be used for data.
So, would you, so since what you're telling me is we might likely expect some more of these, and perhaps we need to look at our regulations to deal with it, so, you know, we appreciate the education at your client's expense and our expense through the attorneys, would you suggest that in the bonds for the original construction of towers, where now we have an amount for removal of the bond for the tower itself, would you suggest that ultimately that there should be something to account for removal of the actual antennas on the structure, because, you know, just sort of add a cure -- in this particular case, you're telling me it's not a booster, it's a completely new thing, but obviously I can see where the technology, trying to anticipate what's going to happen rather than be reactive like we are here, that maybe we should be asking applicants, can something come down?
We generally opposed to bonds, because it adds costs. So, I'll be honest.
I understand, that you end up putting them up when you build these towers, so they're there.
So, like the water tank, for instance, will likely stay. You may have a removal bond already for water tanks. I don't, not for the water tank, but for the antennas attaching.
Right. I don't, and I'm not going to get into the details of this particular situation, because I don't know, but I know, for example, we have many towers that we do have removal bonds on, so that's sort of why I'm asking the question.
And it's industry, I mean, we find it all the time.
Yeah, right. Okay. So, actually, in legal land, I take that as not a bad idea, but I'm not going to say it. All right.
Not if we're being recorded.
Audio and video.
I kind of got that feeling.
Right. Any other questions? That's interesting, this complete copy of section 6409 of the federal laws enclosed. Yes, it's very amazing. What is the penalty? I mean, if you have a minute, what's the penalty of not complying if you're a local or state?
Well, the penalty, it's not necessarily a penalty, it's a, the FCC sold these licenses to AT&amp;T and others, and certain rights flow with those licenses, and 6409 provides some of those rights. So, I wouldn't say it's a penalty, but we, AT&amp;T or others, may seek to enforce their rights, and typically, that's done in federal court, and that gets expensive for everyone, and, which is why we're doing this, and so that we don't, we're not looking to be at loggerheads with municipalities. They're, you know, we need permits all the time, we need, we do modifications frequently. But I would strongly suggest, if I can give you two cents' worth of advice, and maybe that's all it's worth, you might want to take a look at your regs and make sure that it does comply, so that you do avoid, you know, it's a very competitive industry, so everyone's looking to get out, everyone's looking to deploy as fast as possible. So, any impediments become, you know, national problems for the carriers. So, I would recommend that you take a look, and maybe if through your process, you carve out some of these, so that you're in compliance with the federal dictates, that you're meeting the time requirements, that maybe set up an administrative review process, rather than a full public hearing, because generally, we would not be here for a public hearing. We would look for an administrative process, such as a site plan review, or just go to building permit and ask for determination to be made by either the building official, if you have a zoning enforcement officer, that this does not substantially change the tower, we're going to allow a building permit to issue. Or, I'm not sure, I'll go to the planning board and ask them their opinion. I think that's sort of what we're trying to do here, and fit our square peg right now in the round hole, and hopefully, we accomplish that.
Thank you. And just for the record, too, Attorney Drescher did make some recommendations that we need to make sure our regulations are in line with this a little bit better. So, we'll look to try to do that with the next revision cycle of our ordinance.
Sir, in this competitive industry, are there people trying to consolidate the devices so that they can, they can work on multiple platforms?
You mean between carriers?
No, between the different, you know, the 4G, the 3G, the 2G.
Well, I think eventually, we'll all face, I mean, whatever the next G, 8G, I mean, we're all going to migrate eventually. There used to be cellular, you know, you don't find that anymore, the analogs. So, you know, we're digital, 2G will eventually fall off. I think there are programs now where they're trying to encourage customers off of the 2G by offering incentives in whatever manner. So, right now, with 3G, 4G, 5G, it'll let me come 4G, 5G, I would take it, and it's going to continue to develop. I think overall, the antennas have generally gotten sleeker and somewhat smaller than the ones when I first started doing this back in 96, 97. The equipment is much smaller than, you know, when it started with the cellular. So, there has been a lot of consolidation, but these devices, I mean, you have, I see them on the desks, I mean, they're unbelievable, what they can do, with less power now.
I certainly agree with that, but I think that, I personally feel a responsibility not to have like a gazillion antenna on a tower in my town. And with the competition that you're describing, if you have, I mean, at what point do we say that's enough antennas up there? Because if you folks have the compliance of the law that you described before, to make it basically easier to comply with all that competitiveness, there's a pressure on us to make sure that we don't have, you know, a bunch of antenna up there. And so, I'm glad that your job's getting easier, but ours isn't.
Yeah, and what you're going to do is take that pressure off, is to set up rules that you don't have to deal with it, frankly, and it should be done through an administrative process. And if you take a look at what the FCC has been promulgating, that's what they're suggesting to not just local governments, but state governments also. Get rid of the, get rid of the burden of going through this, and not us just clogging up your agenda, but you having to make decisions, spend money reviewing things, when in fact, the federal law says you have to approve it anyway.
Sure.
So, you could hold a public hearing, and you could have, we could have 100 people sitting behind us, and if it's, it fits within the criteria of an eligible facilities request, no matter what anybody says, you still have to approve it, so maybe find a different process. That's the, it'll be quicker and less painful for everyone, the industry and, I think, the town, frankly.
I wonder if the carriers feel a responsibility to consolidate those devices in an effort to make it cooperative for everybody, for the reason I described.
I mean, the preference would be fewer devices, because everything has maintenance, and they break. So, if we have, you know, six antennas versus 12, we have to maintain them less frequently, and we have less chance.
Abundance.
Exactly.
Right.
So, if we could do 4G, you know, all the time, you know, one antenna or two antennas per sector may work, but with the 2G, 3G, and 4G, you're probably going to see going forward either nine or 12 antennas during this interim period. And then, like I said, there has been a consolidation. We used to do 12 all the time, then we're doing six. Now, we added 3G, so we went to nine. Now, we're doing 4G, we're at 12. In this instance, we're just doing nine. So, I think there are some economies, and they'll continue. I found that, as I said, that the cables are getting smaller, we're switching to fiber, the antennas are getting much more efficient with using much less power. So, I expect you'll continue to see reduction, but they're doing a lot of things, you know.
So, they're staying with it.
There's a lot of stuff going on in the antenna.
Okay, and just one technical question.
Sure.
You mentioned that the, most of the antenna are 120 degrees, sort of a swath.
Yes.
Is that typical? Is that universal among AT&amp;T and the other carriers?
From what I've seen, I've represented almost all of the carriers. I'd say that's, I haven't seen anything different.
Okay.
The one exception would be omnidirectionals. You probably don't see those frequently, but their public safety uses them, they're like those antenna rods, they're just like a stick.
Okay.
They're omnidirectional, so they go 360 themselves, which, and they're round, and they broadcast out.
Have to be on the top, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily.
Really?
They usually are, but not necessarily.
Lots of cities and towns require that they get to be the ones on the top of the tower, okay, for public safety.
Phil.
Thank you, John. I notice on the drawing that you also have a proposed three-inch flex conduit that travels along with the other existing conduits that go up there, so I'm assuming then that you'll be adding equipment to the base of the tower for this.
We are. There's an equipment rack with a, with a couple of, they're not like the typical cabinets that we do. It's a rack, and they'll, they slide in cabinets, they're much smaller, but it will be on the concrete pad that's there already.
But there's generally two, there's generally two cabinets.
Oh, there's.
One is the battery pack.
And they're already there.
Okay, so you won't, well, I guess what I'm, what I'm a little, you're adding 4G to this.
We're adding, right, we're adding enhanced 4G.
So, but you're not replacing existing equipment as an upgrade.
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess that gets to what Brian's question is, because I know Sprint and Alcatel Lusa replaced their components. They replaced their eight, nine battery packs with 16 and 18 battery packs, and that the fiber optics come in are capable for 4G and 5G, and they only use in one half of the fiber optic cable, because the other half is for the future. But that replaces all the equipment. Now, whether or not it replaces all the antenna, I'm not sure, but it replaces all the equipment that's down in the base. But you're actually adding equipment.
We're adding, I believe we're adding one piece of equipment. You'll see it if you take a look at sheet A1, over on the right-hand side. There's a cabinet and surgery, the rest are there, you see it in, sort of darkened, bolded. Yep. So, everything else remains. That is the LTE cabinet that comes in.
All right, and that's the one that actually has the actual site for the 4G.
That's correct.
Right, good.
And I think you probably, you seem well versed, and all of the others are coax cables, so everything coming off the rest, you'll see there five-eighths or seven-eighths inch coax cable running from the equipment cabinets up to the, each of the antennas, that's the way they function.
Right.
Just one?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments? Who would like to go? Well, let's open it up to the public. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. Any suggestions, motions, discussion?
I'll make a motion that the project, the proposed project will not have a substantial change to the physical dimensions of the tower or base station.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Barbara, second by Simone. Discussions on that? Any questions? I understand it. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Seven, zero. Thank you.
Give a shot. I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for this proposed communication antenna colocation project, and attached to that motion, subheadings A, 1 through 9, B, 1 through 6, and what was 8A and B.
A motion from Richard.
I'll take a, I'll second it, but I want to consider whether you'll make an amendment to this. It's been pointed out to me that 6409A, we look on page two, and this is pointed out by our new member, who apparently has some experience in this, actually has some specific language in itself that if met, would by definition be a substantial increase, as in the number of structures that are being proposed.
Cabinets, equipment cabinets.
Equipment cabinets, under two on that page, right?
Yeah, number two.
And well, when actually, one, two, and three, all of them, but in this particular case, it would involve a, and so, I'm suggesting that, for example, there's, number two says that there is a nod to exceed four. this proposed communication antenna colocation project. And attached to that motion, subheadings A, one through nine, B, one through six, and what was eight, A and B.
A motion from Richard.
Period. I'll take a, I'll second it, but I want to consider whether you'll make an amendment to this. It's been pointed out to me that 6409A, we look on page two, and this is pointed out by our new member who apparently has some experience in this, actually has some specific language in itself that if met, would by definition be a substantial increase as in the number of structures that are being proposed.
Cabinets, equipment cabinets.
Equipment cabinets under two on that page, right?
Yeah, number two.
And well, when actually, one, two, and three, all of them are, but in this particular case, it would involve a, and so, I'm suggesting that, for example, there's, number two says that there is a nod to exceed four in revolve to the installation of new equipment cabinets.
Which sheet do you want?
The actual law.
The law. It's in the packet.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
H2?
H2, section two. And if you actually, one, one, two, and three, under one C, actually all have provisions that if met by definition amount to a substantial increase in the size of the tower.
Right.
Which have to do with the antenna height being increased by more than 10%, which is not the case in this case. The new, four new cap, equipment cabinets, or coming out more than 20 feet from the tower. And I would just like to consider adding to this motion or making it a condition of the approval that should this come forward for any future modifications by AT&amp;T, that this equipment cabinet be considered as part of the four.
Mm-hmm.
If we're applying this law, any changes under this law should be cumulative, not a new clock ticking each time. So, in regards to Richard's motion, I would just make a motion to amend and further that this upgrade be considered in conjunction with any future upgrades or changes requested in regards to the applicability of section 6409A, section one C.
Can you say that one more time?
No.
Gail's got it.
That this upgrade will be considered-
Considered.
In conjunction with any future requests for upgrades pursuant to section 6409A, section one C.
I believe that's number four right there, because you have one, two, three, four.
Well, I think-
It's number one.
It's the installation of, right, right, not to exceed.
Equipment shelter, which this would be the equipment shelter.
Right. So, they're at the max for equipment shelters.
I think the word chemo is perfect.
Yeah, AT&amp;T's not, we're just, we have the cabinets, there are others on the site.
Okay. But I think that this application with AT&amp;T.
Right. It's, we're adding one cabinet to what we have currently.
Right.
Was that per carrier or was it per building, per site?
Per carrier.
This one C, section two?
Per carrier.
Well, we've got it. Actually, I think it refers to the tower, but that will be for the next applicant to argue.
Yes.
And just a question, when you say the future, is there a timeframe on that? I mean, is that now, over the next year, five years, 10 years for each carrier?
Well, if this statute remains in, this rule remains in effect, and it will probably be amended a gazillion times, then whatever the rule is at the time would be the one that we would look at. It just means that if there's another application on this, just like Phil was talking about minutes from the selectmen, we need to know what we added this time so we can keep track of that. That's all.
Can I just offer a point of clarification? I'm not going to take exception to it. I fully understand your point, but what you're referring to is an FCC policy statement that was issued earlier this year. So, just so you're clear, that's not the statute, that's the FCC's interpretation. And under that section one C-
Yeah.
They're actually referring to a different agreement. So, you're a little bit out of context. I understand your point and I, you know.
Okay. So, it's an interpretation of 16 U.S.C.
Right. And what it refers-
Of 470F.
Section Roman numeral one C is actually of a third document, which is called the National Colocation Agreement. Now, that deals with historic review under section 106 called NEPA. So-
All right. So, take out the reference to that, but just say that it be considered in the future with any further upgrades of the site.
Sorry to interrupt.
And then we'll take it. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
So amended.
So amended, actually.
Did you catch all that? Did you catch all that, Gail?
Yep.
He gets it all.
I'll get it. I'll word it up better later, but I got it.
Better than I ever would.
So, we have a motion on the table, amended motion. Take a vote on the amendment.
It's just the one C.
This is the governing body.
I think-
It's okay. They're the ones with the T.
Changed my motion.
It wasn't in our packet.
I think that's what happened.
Okay.
It's 6409A.
Okay. All right. So, the amendment is done. Okay. Is everybody clear with that amendment, with that amended motion?
Good job, Scott.
Yes.
Okay. Let's take a vote on that then. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any noes? Abstentions? Seven zero. Thank you.
That wasn't the next one?
We have one more easy one. MAP 40, R 55, conditional use permit hearing and a request to waive site plan review requirements for new singular wireless PCS LLC, AT&amp;T owner Francis J. De Rico, for a proposal to co-locate three antennas and six radio heads to six existing antennas on an existing telecommunications tower and add equipment inside the existing equipment room. The existing telecommunications tower has a height of 225 feet above grade and the proposed three additional antennas will be mounted onto the tower at a height of 155 feet. The property is located at 203 Perimeter Road in the conservation and open space. Brian, any comments on this, please?
Well, I'm going to forego the whole explanation of what we began with on the last one and just jump to the fact that this is a different site and they're basically asking for the same request. This is an existing tower. And, you know, I put all pretty much the same recommendations on this one as I did the last one. And so, if you want to take those out of order, just the same way you did on the last one, and put eight with eight C up in front of three, and then just recommend the same motion on this one. That would be my recommendation as well.
I'll make a motion, this project has no regional impact.
Second.
Barbara, second. Richard? Comments, questions? Ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any noes? Abstentions? Seven zero.
I'll make a motion to waive the development regulation requiring a site plan finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second.
All clear on that motion? Seconded by Barbara, motion by Barbara, seconded by Richard. Questions, comments? Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Seven zero. Thank you.
Move to accept. The application is complete and ready for review.
Motion from Richard to accept. Eight seconds.
Second.
Second. Simone? Questions, comments, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No abstention? No abstention. Seven zero. Thank you.
All set. Thank you very much. Thank you again for the last vote. I'll do a nifty, lawyerly trick and say I'll incorporate all of my comments from the last hearing into this one with the exception of the address and the fact that this installation is actually going on an existing tower. AT&amp;T has an installation. We're basically doing the same type of installation with three LTE antennas. The equipment cabinet rack in this, in this instance is actually in a equipment room at the base of, of the tower. There's a large equipment shelter and all the carriers have a, an equipment room. So, with that, I'll spare some time. I'd be happy to answer any questions in particular, but it's basically the same thing on the tower, not extending the height of the tower, nor extending it outward. And if you take a look at sheet A2, you'll see that AT&amp;T's installation is at a antenna centerline height of 155 feet on a 195-foot tower with somewhat the antennas on the top.
And how far is it going to come out from the tower?
Certainly less than 20 feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Easy enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, okay, let's move to a public comment. And again, we have no public, so we're going to close it. And where do you want to go with this?
A move that we determine that the proposed project will not have a substantial change to the physical dimensions of the tower or base station.
Got a motion from Richard.
Second.
The motion seconded by Barbara. Discussions? Everybody understand this?
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Seven zero. That's it.
I'm sort of hoping Richard makes-
I know, right?
Says to Gail, I'll make the same motion I just made on the previous application.
I'll second that. If that works for you.
Richard makes that, fine with me.
Yep.
Make some motion, Richard makes a motion. Barbara seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seven zero.
Thank you.
All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Brian.
I didn't put it on your agenda or on your correspondence.
I just think it was the most efficient shape.
But there's one other thing that we wanted to talk about tonight, and Brian asked if he could bring it up. Since he got assigned to the CMAC committee last meeting.
Jeff, carefully.
He went to the first committee meeting, or actually, I think it was the second one because they had already had one, but got some information from the meeting and just wanted to kind of provide a report on what he learned from that meeting. And we also provided these maps that are basically the engineers' first shot at coming up with some drawings that show what they're thinking about and types of ideas that they've got for how to address the problems at these two intersections for the CMAC project. So, I don't know if Brian, Brian will want to-
Just explain, or just define what CMAC is for the folks that might be watching this.
CMAC is congestion mitigation air quality. And that's a, it's a state-funded grant program that basically works to help reduce congestion and help build up better air quality. So, hence the name congestion mitigation air quality. And basically, the town got a grant for doing these two projects. And on the last ballot, we voted to put in the rest of the money from the fund balance that the town has, which is leftover money after the budgeting stuff is all taken care of. And so, the voters voted to put up the rest of the money from that fund balance. And then, away we go with the project. So-
Okay.
It's basically where we're at, I think. And I'm going to let Brian speak to some of these things.
Yeah, that was great. That was great. I mean, that was the history of it. Does anybody have any questions about the history of it?
Yes. So, the fund balance, is the fund balance to go strictly towards this intersection or can it go towards any road improvement?
It was voted specifically to go towards this project, which is looking at both, there's two intersections actually. This one and the one at Elm Street and High Street, Main Street. So, you have the other one, the other drawings behind us. Yeah. And specifically for that, that project.
And the grant's going to cover the full cost of this?
Yep. And that'll include construction too.
And I'm assuming it's a federal grant?
It's a state grant.
Are there any strings attached to that? I mean, I know we're tied in, I'm just curious.
Well, anytime you do a state project, you always have to meet whatever criteria they require of you. So, I mean, I mean, there's a huge book like this on everything that you have to do for projects like this. You know, part of it's environmental stuff, part of it's, you know, there's a host of things that you have to do as requirements of the grant. But I don't know what you're asking for as far as strings attached, but nothing-
Wouldn't you say, wouldn't you say a lot of those quote unquote strings would have been satisfied in the application process?
Again, I mean, it depends on what type of string you're concerned about.
As long as there's no obligations, I was just wondering if there's any obligations requirements by the town that had to be met, you know, upcoming. I'm not, I, never mind.
They're basically, they're basically looking for us to prove that we're improving the air quality, you know, do a project that improves air quality and congestion, takes care of congestion.
The project's already met the requirements, so that's why you have the money for the project. So, you've already done that.
Yeah.
If you didn't meet the requirement.
But it's a legitimate concern. Are you saying like, is there going to be like money we're going to need down the road? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, as long as it's a grant and it's free, then that answers.
Well, that's-
Right.
Well, inasmuch as the grant is already secured-
Right.
The money is going to be spent.
Right.
You know, it's money on its way. And even though we're sort of in the very beginning processes of the design of what's actually going to happen for the, for the CMAC grant, I thought it would be important to show you folks the drawings that we looked at at the last meeting only because of what I call the inevitability of this project. I wanted to show you folks what we're talking about because eventually, this is going to be something that's going to affect all of our rides to work, or it's going to be something people are going to be talking about in coffee shops. So, I thought it was smart to get you folks' input on this. Basically, we're talking about two different intersections. One over by Sully's and the library, and the other one up by the Cumberland Farms across from St. Lawrence's church, right? And there are a couple of different strategies to mitigate the traffic, especially at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day as people are going to work and coming home. A consultant was hired, an expert in traffic mitigation. Am I using the right word, Brian? Mitigation? Are we okay with that? All right. An expert was consulted and they came up with a different, a couple of different mockups. And I thought it might be a nice idea to provide you folks with the mockups because when we looked at all the different drawings, I don't think anybody in the room was like, wow, that's the one. And I thought it was important to bring that up to you folks because we're kind of responsible in this town for coming up with good ideas. Wouldn't you agree with that? So, I figured if anybody had a better idea than something they see here, I would love it if you let me know. I would love it if you let, you know, Mike know. There's the possibility of-
Miss Mike?
Mike is the consultant from Redlin, is it Redlin and Johnson?
McFarland and Johnson.
I beg your pardon, McFarland and Johnson.
Mike Long is-
Redlin and Johnson.
Redlin and Johnson is a place I buy pipe from my company. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Get confused. So, so anyway, there's an inevitability of some sort of traffic mitigation on both ends of town. Possibly this intersection, as you see on the, on the first page here. Pleasant Street and Signal Zero. Bottom, on the bottom surface of this picture right here, you'll see a square that is white. That's the top of the Cumberland Farms gas station roof, just to give you some sort of bearing. And sort of at the top up there where that blue car is, sort of directly above it, only near the top line, that would be sort of where St. Lawrence's church is. That gives you some sort of scale of what kind of area we're talking about.
That's their parking lot.
That's their parking lot. That's right.
Oh, is that picture, is that the new Cumberland Farms?
That's the old, so these are older aerials. One of my comments to them was going to be use the new aerials that we have, because we do have new aerials now.
That's Google map for you.
Well, is that, they're probably just GIS.
Well, the town has new aerials too.
That's probably Google.
This possible scenario that we're looking at here shows a couple of different lanes with an island in the middle. There's a turn lane going to the left, heading, I guess that would be east, excuse me, heading west. And then, as you go down the hill right there, there's an island dividing those two different lanes.
What is the red?
Crosswalk.
What's the orange too? Is that the driveways, curb cuts and everything?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. There's sort of going to be an effect on the different accesses to those different properties, including those two on the right and the one on the left.
Is car code a town road or is that a private road?
Town.
Is it town? Okay.
So, it's possibility number one for that particular intersection. If you'll flip the plate, the page, please. That is possibility number two. Aroundabout. You will hear that word, you will hear that word a lot in the near- You will hear that word, you will hear that word a lot in the near future, roundabout. Don't say rotary, it will reveal you were born in Massachusetts.
Yes.
All right. Same thing, I think everybody gets their bearings on that. This roundabout, the idea about the roundabout, or at least the benefit of the roundabout, is people tend to slow down when there's an obstruction in the road, and what it does is it sort of makes people glance, I don't know if glance is the word, but makes the people, what's the word I'm looking for, Phil, makes the people sort of, instead of, instead of being, you know, instead of dreamily driving down a straight road, you see the obstruction on the road and you're...
Aware.
Thank you. Okay, so that's possibility number two for that particular intersection.
So the purple, which was some on the first one, is a sidewalk, I'm taking?
It is, it is, and they're thinking possibly in those interstitial spaces between the yellow and the purple, that there might be some additional parking there if they can fit it.
Yeah, if you look on the next page, you'll see...
Green space.
Oh, look at that.
A couple of different...
It's a slight, I don't know if this is a different layer or not, or if it just shows...
Yeah, it's a little different.
These right here, above to the left of the roundabout, those are four additional parking spots for the units that are there. The purple is the sidewalk, and the green is green space.
I just, I'll just tell you my reaction when I look at that, is it takes away way too much on street parking. If you go down there when there are events downtown, there are cars all along, particularly the, as we're looking at the upper side of that stretch, I don't, I don't see how four parking spaces would even come close to the area.
And church, too.
I, I kind of...
No, they're all over here, because I come out mountain road fairly frequently, and it's, they're all, they're there when there's anything going on.
I had a concern about that, too, and I don't know, maybe I can just bring it up here. I, I also think there's a concern of having parking backing out into a roundabout, or just, just past the roundabout, as the people are kind of, they're kind of accelerating at that point in the roundabout, and so to have a vehicle backing out right there could be a possible conflict.
I mean, it almost looks like there's enough space if they, they move the roundabout towards Pleasant Street, that you could almost put parking in the green space and provide a separate...
I was thinking, yeah, maybe you have some type of raised, raised curb that separates it and still allows for parking to come in and go from the other side.
Is the difference between the yellow one and the green one?
Yeah, they're, they're not exactly the same.
They're not exactly the same.
They're similar, they're tweaked.
Right, one has, and I assume that's grass, and the yellow one has no grass, is that right?
Yeah, for one thing, but there's slight variation on the sidewalks, too.
Yep.
There's a lot of room right, the problem with the scenario with parking on it, I think, is, and having it right there, is the parking that's there now works, because there's a huge amount of space.
Yeah, it's really wide, so you don't have to worry about it.
Really wide, so there is plenty of room for people to be turning at the circle, for going through, and have parking, I mean, my bet is there are very few rear-end collisions there, because there's plenty of room to maneuver about, and this takes it away.
One of the things that the fire department brought up, though, was that they actually have had instances where people will travel on the wrong side of the street in that location, because it is so wide on that side. They'll actually cross over and...
I cannot solve... It won't work, trust, I'm not gonna put any thought into those concerns.
It's true, that guy's gonna be there no matter what we do to this road.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do.
He's only gonna do it once.
Well, but if you, if you have a narrow road that's coming out of a roundabout, that doesn't, doesn't even allow for that, you know, then...
I cannot account for everything.
So if you please move on to the next page, after the green roundabout. The page up near Sully's, top left-hand corner, you'll see a black roof, that is the roof of Sully's. About the middle of the page, you'll see the library, and about the middle lower part of the page, you'll see the park. This is, the yellow lines represent sort of a reshuffling of the curbs there. One of the ideas, one of the benefits of this, and this wasn't a very popular idea, but one of the benefits of this, was it was going to reduce certain turns that occur, for instance, coming down High Street and going straight, it was gonna sort of divide that up a little bit. This was, this was one that the, that representative from McFarland Johnson threw out there as an alternative, and didn't talk much about.
Brian, did the conversation of, I don't want to go ahead of you here, but did the conversation of a one-way main street going north, and then somehow coming back around, ending up next to the bank and the post office, down on Depot, and making the center out behind Town Hall a center of parking or shopping, whatever we're gonna do? Because I see the two roundabouts that you're gonna talk about here coming up. And I'm just wondering, because if, you know, Elm onto Main would just feed around the circle, and if they were heading south, they would go around the circle, somehow they'd be able to get back to the bridge and cross it. I'm wondering, did one way, I know it hasn't been that much in favor, and a lot of, there's been some discussion both ways, but I've actually met, talked to an awful lot of people that kind of like that idea, and everything just feeds one direction. Eliminates widening, it eliminates parking problems, it eliminates a whole bunch of things, and it keeps traffic moving in one direction, and I've seen it in a lot of towns where it works very well, Bangor, Waterville, Maine.
John, I'll be sure to represent that in the next meeting that we have.
Dover.
Dover, exactly, Dover.
If it's okay with you, I'll stop by your shop this week, and we could talk a little bit more about it? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
I think you will find that idea has been discussed in great detail before. And in regards to this, I will note something that I suspect would also generate significant feedback, would be the realignment of the curb, so to speak, by Sully's. No, 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 look at what they've done at Sully's.
Is that a curb?
Yeah, that is a curb and a sidewalk.
Yep, you have one, one curb cut going in.
One curb cut going in.
And you eliminate parking spaces there, too, where the curb cut is.
Yep, and a sidewalk.
Now, let me tell you, from an engineering standpoint, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I look at a fair amount of these, that's exactly what should happen there, because that place is sort of safe, because it's so dangerous, that people understand that. Though, I swear to God, one day I am gonna back out of one of those side spots and hit that telephone pole. One day it will happen.
Happens all the time.
But, hasn't happened yet for me. But I suspect that that proposal, while not discussed much, would generate a huge...
Actually, it was a popular idea, one of the, he only spoke about this very briefly, but one of the, I think, pretty much all of the time we talked about was this, this corner on this park right here, there was a lot of discussion about that, and the sidewalk around Sully's, I think that that's, that will be a well-received. I mean, everybody knows the stories about cars whipping around that corner and hitting the cars in the parking lot and stuff like that, moreover, there's no place to walk down there, you know, there's no place to walk, certainly you could cross the street, but there's no place to walk on that side of the road, and...
And extending the curb cut by the park, what is that, eliminating the people who cut through and you can't see, the people don't see, or what is that doing?
I think it's attempting to narrow down the amount of crosswalk that people have as they're going across the road. Because it's a very big crosswalk, it's really long.
And apparently, this, this sort of tripod-shaped crosswalk here, that's right in front of the library, according to Mike from Farland Johnson, is one of those only, you know, three-way crosswalks in existence. And it, and it poses some unique safety issues. So they would really like to address that in the traffic mitigation.
So it gives sort of a resting stop in the middle of it.
I think, yeah.
This, this is similar to kind of the initial concept that I think went forward with the grant application, because we didn't really have in our heads that it could be possible to do, you know, the next couple of ideas, and, you know, so...
Wouldn't Sully's have to develop the road behind, well, it was private property, but, because, you know, you can't get around and back onto Summer Street? Is it Summer Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Summer's the next one down.
It's hard to get back on there, because they have a dumpster in the way, and, because cars park up along the backside there.
Sure.
Just know if that could incorporate it into it, or you can...
Easy one-in, one-out of Sully's.
You mean not just, you think about it...
There's, there's a village master, there's a village master plan that sort of speaks to that.
Is that right?
You drive in here and you...
We, as a town, approved a plan that shows some of that as a concept idea for some parking and whatever to be, to, all that to go back behind. But that would take some significant investment by the property owner.
It's associated groceries now, correct?
Yeah.
So they have a little bit deeper pockets than, imagine the Sully's had, but, yeah, that's all part of it. You could do, because there's a lot of land back there, you could push it back, you know, consideration.
Brian, just for my edification, does the town have authority to require that they make this parking lot one-way at this point?
It's in existing use, and we'd have a tough time doing that, I think.
Okay.
But new owners, you might...
We can, we can try to work with them on anything, I mean, if we can propose something that we think works and that will work okay for them as well.
Right.
There are painted directional signs on that parking lot that nobody pays any attention to.
They probably know the pitfalls, though.
I pay attention to those signs.
Well, I always, I always, except for when I want to take my chances at the telephone pole, I always go in the same way and come out the same way, but, you know, not all the people do.
Because right now, it's kind of all wide open, the whole front of Sully's is wide open.
I actually...
People can go in.
I mean, you can go...
I know people...
Yeah, you can go in and out, it doesn't, there's no direction in it at all.
If you have a curb, you get out, too, at one point.
I was sitting in the car the other night waiting, and I saw something I had never seen before. Somebody drove around and then backed up nearly the entire length to back into a parking spot at the very end of the aisle. I kept waiting for somebody to come around and just wham, but it didn't happen.
We sell grocery cookies out here.
Oh, yeah, I put on bells out there.
It is, it is, I don't, I like going to ends, because it's more dangerous, because people could fly around.
Well, I had a bell, so maybe I felt safer.
You had a big bucket in front of you, too.
So, everybody seems to have a concern about the sidewalk along Sully's, it seems to be a pretty popular thing to talk about.
Okay.
All right, Brian? Okay, everybody finished with that drawing, next one, with the two roundabouts. This one.
I can definitely say that I am not in favor of the two roundabouts.
How about combining?
Wait till you see the next page.
There's, there's actually two concepts, one's the large roundabouts, and one's the mini roundabouts.
These will be mini roundabouts.
This one, actually, the first one is large, the green one, the green centers.
Yeah.
The minis are even worse.
There will be two consecutive roundabouts. As described here.
What this allows...
By the way, I beg your pardon, Brian, you always go ahead.
I can just explain, what this allows for is actually, if you have a large vehicle, to traverse the middle sections. So you wouldn't have to obey the, the gray curb thing, or the, even the, the green thing necessarily.
All the school buses.
You'd be able to cross right over it and, and, and...
Give, it, give me a direct, give me a course of travel, I'm not following you at all.
So if you're coming down High Street, and you needed to make a left onto Elm Street, and you had a big truck, and you couldn't make that turn into the roundabout and get around that circle in that, in that right, in that way, you could basically cut across the roundabout, get into the right, into the right lane, and then sort of cut across the, the next roundabout as well. So you'd be able to traverse over the top of those roundabouts without having to follow the same path as what vehicles would generally travel.
Would have a, the trailer have a longer throes.
What you'd have is basically, it, the, the middle thing would be like a hump, instead of like a curb, a vertical curb that would stop you from...
So it would be open.
It would be open.
Yeah.
If you can picture the roundabout over in, over in Grassmere, you know the cobblestones that lead up to it, probably about 20 feet wide around the edge, it would be slightly, a slightly elevated version of that. The edges where the concrete meets the cobblestones will be beveled, and the thing in the middle will be approximately nine inches higher than the level, you know, out, out on the actual pavement itself. The idea is low-bed trailers can get around that, buses can get around that, and...
That's the way Wallace Road is. Wallace Road is elevated, Grassmere isn't, because of the pitch of the road.
Well, Wallace Road actually has a section, though, that is restricted from any, any traffic. I mean, you can't get into that very middle section where the plants are.
Well, you have to explain that to people every once in a while.
Right.
Yeah, for people that drive right through, and, you know, ruin the signs and stuff, yeah, of course.
I've seen lines of people at Wallace Road going north in the afternoon, and probably going south in the morning, I don't get there, though, in the morning. I'm just thinking two of these roundabouts is going to, could be a pretty good, probably better than what's there now, but maybe not a lot better, because the traffic's gonna get back up in the circle, and it's still...
I can't agree more. I think it's extremely hectic.
And I go through this, at these intersections, all the time, the reality is, is that the roundabout at the high school at Wallace does exactly what it wants to do, it, it, it diffuses the traffic and slows it down, so you would not have the backup at these going north. And likewise, in the morning, there's a backup here anyways, and it's usually because of the sun, not tra, traffic, at that time of year, it's, it's worse. So I don't think that it would cause the traffic, there are some people that are just opposed to roundabouts and don't, you know, like them, and you're not gonna be able to get around that, but I, I, I think the traveling over it concept, making that patently obvious is dangerous, because, and I don't know how other communities have dealt with it, but I can see that as creating unexpected movement in the circle area for, that people would not be expecting, by people taking that route who are not necessarily the school bus or the tractor-trailer or something like that. I, I...
I understand what you're saying, but it would be tantamount to going over a speed bump really, really fast. I mean, it's something you can do, but you probably wouldn't do twice.
Again, I can't account for those people, I guess, so I should just move on.
And I assume...
Name is the person that backed up into that space.
Fair enough, yeah.
I assume tractor-trailers, I mean, I know this study, but just, I'm just trying to picture a tractor-trailer coming out of Elm, or trying to negotiate two of these. And I guess they probably could, but coming Main Street, around the first one, around the second one, going north on 114, I assume that traffic drawings have all been done, but, because I know we can't have one circle in there. And because of the library and the historic corner of the Ho-El, or whatever that building is or was, right? So, this is, this is an answer, and again, keep going back, and I, and this is why I've pictured, you know, I've gone over this over and over, and please consider, as, as, please consider one way as much, because I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, busy time of day, a lot of traffic in this, a lot of traffic coming out of here, these four roads. Fire truck, tractor-trailer, somebody big, two tractor-trailers.
I can't agree more.
I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, at the right ti, the wrong time, wrong whatever, when you need to get through there, I can just...
Even just a recreational person, I know when I'm towing my boat, you know, extended pickup, eight-foot bed and a 25-foot pontoon boat, you know, just going through that one rotary on Wallace is extremely tough. Same with Grassmere, you're obviously always on the cobblestone, but you're, you know, you're coming close, so your tires hitting the curb and stuff, and, and it's a lot of vehicle to go through.
I don't know, we gotta have a driving competition, I take my loaded horse trailer through all the time.
I've seen a lot of truck parallels from both rotaries, just fine.
I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it's tight, and when you have traffic, it makes it even worse.
It equalizes the traffic, instead of having one person stuck here, you have everybody moving. Henry Bridge, you had people going, Henry Bridge, it was stuck there when it was, when it wasn't there.
The question I had was, the question I had was, would people generally prefer long lines of slow traffic or short lines of stop traffic?
Short lines of stop traffic.
You think? Okay.
Traffic moving.
Yes.
I'd say long lines of slow traffic would make more sense. We should distribute it a little bit more.
CMAC would say slow traffic, not stop and go.
And I remember the price tag on Wallace Road Roundabout, I think they said it was around a million dollars. And so was the...
Which time, the first time or the second time?
Second time.
We didn't pay for the second time, did we?
Yeah, but I think, John, I think we talked about the whole project.
That was not the rotary, that number got flung around, it included sidewalks and other constraints.
I know, I know, but we got two here, so I, I don't, I don't know how much money we're talking about, but there's a lot of consideration, this is a lot of work, and it's, Dan, a lot of good planning, thought in this, but...
There's several places in Massachusetts...
Once you have these, you're gonna own these for a long time.
John, there's several places in Massachusetts that have two roundabouts about the same distance apart.
I know.
And they're clustered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've gone, I've gone, I've gone through them in busy traffic, but the traffic flows with trucks, it flows.
The other thing to consider is, these intersections have been studied quite a bit over the past year. The other thing to consider is, these intersections have been studied quite a bit over the past years and like a signal intersection, that intersection doesn't, it, it, there's just not enough room for it. You gotta have a left turn lane to be able to get onto, if you're heading from North MAST onto Elm Street, you gotta have a left turn lane to be able to make that left turn. And then you'd have a signal there and you'd also, you'd still be backing up traffic with a signal, probably more so than you would with a, with a roundabout.
Yeah, but you need a double, you need a double signalized intersection on here, just like the one on twenty-five in Center Sandwich, in Center, Center Harbor. And so, and when they presented this to us, the state presented that plan to us fifteen years ago, at that point in time, sent, that intersection at Center Harbor was the only one in the state. I don't know if there's any more.
We can't even get people to like the lights at Shaw's and Rite Aid and Plummer Road, there's no way we'd get people to agree on lights, signalized coordinated lights here, it's never happened.
No light. Light and it would have, and they have to be, they have to be coordinated.
I think if you could do the, the one ways, like what John was talking about, spending the money, I think it would be a lot more favorable to the residents. I think it would keep things flowing, I think it would be a better atmosphere all around. I think with the two intersections there, I don't think there is a good option, no matter what happens there.
The church would stay two-way, by the way.
A roundabout is actually, a roundabout is actually just a very, very mini version of that one-way concept. I mean, it literally put, makes you go one way around a circle and go the other direction if you, or make a left turn the other direction. That's honestly the only, the only difference.
Just a, just a one-way, everyone coming over.
It's that same concept, but centralized in that one spot versus in a bigger street.
Exactly, but I think the traffic would flow more and I think the perception would be a lot better from residents. Like the Dover, you know, time on Dover, that flows great, I lived there for a couple of years and that flows fantastic.
It's like a big roundabout though.
Of course, it is, it's a big roundabout, but it flows a lot better than two packed roundabouts together. As opposed to coming in and slowing down and going around and going around, you're moving through.
Right. And this is the planning board and we're planning for the future, so we're not planning to take these things down in a few years, we're talking about owning them for a long time.
Streets are wider and it's, it's a good, it works really well.
Especially with what we discussed at the last one, that is gonna be at the Board of Selectmen, this next Monday is the next public hearing on the land that wants to be donated to the town in the back here. That's why this one way that I've actually spoken to another selectman and several other folks about how this, if we get this kind of land, would be a great kind of a town.
The amount of money that's gonna be spent with the sidewalks, to do the two roundabouts and everything total nuts and bolts. I would imagine it could be somewhat comparable to, to doing a full one-way.
I think it's a, something to, I mean, just, I'm just.
You should not be illuminating in public meetings about what if in regards to private property and what might be happening, we can't, we have to, from a planning concept, and we're here to give feedback here to our person who's going, they have to work with public lands because C-MAC does not include money for eminent domain or land purchases, and I don't know that in the warrant article, there was any other money allocated, so.
Not word eminent domain.
Well, it is, the two words, two words.
No, we were.
The fact of the matter is the funding's here for this project, but if we start changing the project significantly like that, it may not be, it would be, it would be a totally different project and the, and the state would have to re-review and determine whether or not that funding could even still be available for that.
I don't know that anybody's disagreeing that one-way traffic flows better. The one-way, the big one-way circles through downtowns are very nice to drive through, there's, I don't think there's any question about that. But I think what we have is the area that has been brought to us.
Yeah, Brian, Brian, another thought is the, those cobblestones in the middle of the roundabout, Nashua installed those in those two.
Down by Riviere.
Uh, down by Riviere, I think they kept that, but over near the new high school.
The new high school, on Hollis Road.
They tore those up and put down a street edge.
Okay.
You know, it's, they etched the street and then they painted.
I also go through there all the time.
Those are big, too, they're very large, but I don't know if that's, that's probably cheaper, cobblestones, it has to be expensive to install.
Actually cobblestones was just kind of a universal, universal word they were using for whatever, you know, bumpy material, right?
It could be, yeah.
Really?
It could be.
You know, I was, I was, we're using rumble strips, we're using a lot of different ones, I mean, none of us are traffic technicians. No, I don't think so, if they're pointed in the right direction, it should be fine. Thank you for your feedback, the, the last page shows another rendition.
The mini, that's the mini one.
These are the mini ones, and these are the ones that you literally drive, you, you may drive over.
Yeah, the other one may have had the vertical, I don't, I'm not sure, because it was a normal-sized roundabout, right?
Yeah, I beg your pardon, that one was, that one was, the one we just looked at, yeah.
I was a little worried about that one.
The green, yeah, the green space, yeah, you're right.
People driving through it.
The green space was just like it looks, just like the one over in Grassmere on the page just before. This page I've asked you to look at now with the, with the two gray roundabouts, those are the cobblestones slash rumble strips that slash spike roundabouts. And that would be as described, approximately the same layout with some different, with some modifications, including there would be a requirement to move the sidewalk back a little closer to the library, as well as in front of the church, and there is your sidewalk out in front of Sully's. Where the purple lines are, those are sidewalks, where the red lines are, those are places where there is presently a sidewalk that would have to be moved back. And the orange stripes are basically the, the attachments to the local curb cuts into the driveways and things.
So this one actually is the least.
Impacting.
It's least impact to the current configuration, right?
It was the most popular one that they looked at.
And my guess is that's why.
Your, your, your three-way walkway that you were talking about, right?
And by the way, I think this is probably a good time to mention, one of the reasons why there's no sort of, there's no sort of option that jumps out and says hello is because the library there, I should have mentioned this earlier, the library here is on the National Registry. These properties over here are all subject to being on the National, on the Registry of Historic Properties.
Which ones you're talking about?
The ones in the corner, just to the, just across the street from the library, where the church is and the big.
The church and then the property between the church and town.
There's a property there, yeah, that the salon is on the bottom floor of, those are not presently on the National, on the, on the Registry, however they are, applicable. So anyway, there's not much we can do in the way of eminent domain or moving those out of there or anything that you might do with an Etch A Sketch. These are basically what we gotta lit, what we gotta have to work with. That's why we hired the engineers, I mean, this is, this is deck we have to reshuffle, however, there are variables that we can't move.
You can work it off of you on this one. You've got a tight, tight.
It would be, it would be a privilege of mine to have any ideas that you folks have, you can get ahold of me through email or through Brian and I would love to represent your ideas in this committee to hopefully make something that works really well, because we're very lucky to have these funds and we appreciate the people who worked very hard to skewer them for us, so now's our chance. If you have a better idea, please, please let me know.
Let me ask, I do have a question. How would? And I think you have to ask McPhirland Johnson this, what is the impact of the crossing guard on these? Because the whole point of roundabouts is to keep traffic moving. And the crossing guards, and I'm thinking in particular by the library on Elm Street. Definitely, they stop traffic.
They direct traffic.
That's, and they, they, and they've moved it back, it's been pointed out, so maybe they've moved it back so it won't have the impact, but I'd, I'd like that to be considered, because I don't know that I see, because they do direct traffic now and in the past, we actually had one crossing guard who was an amazing traffic director out there, she was incredible. But I don't see how that function could continue with the roundabout, that's, which the police have a fit about anyways, but.
Because he sits right here, right?
Right, yeah, because he's right on the corner and they come out.
And it catches traffic both ways.
And they, but they're right there and they get the traffic both ways, so they can really direct it, whereas now.
They'd have to be in between the two roundabouts.
And they, so they couldn't do it, and the crosswalk is moved way down Elm Street, so they'd be completely out of the picture, they wouldn't even be.
Well, they may not, in the design of it, they may not have been aware of that, so perhaps.
Well, so that's, I just would like that considered in the design of that intersection.
The other thing to think about though is, I mean, that crossing guard is there, supposed to be there for school crossing.
We've had that discussion for fifteen years, it doesn't matter, it won't change.
Well, but I'm saying, if, if the guy is there to direct traffic, that's one thing, this roundabout may solve the issues of needing to have someone direct traffic because it'll allow people to enter.
He doesn't direct traffic, he allow, he stops traffic for the schoolchildren to cross.
I have seen, I have seen many a times, because I drive through that intersection every day.
No, 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 you must have been mistaken, you were somewhere else.
Stopping traffic to allow just cars to go through.
Buses, typically buses, if it backs up, he will stop, I've seen him stop it.
I don't know, nobody sees the one with the.
But a bus is a vehicle, not a child wanting to go through a crosswalk.
She was.
She was the best.
So, but if this concept works properly, it'll allow vehicles to enter at a faster rate and they won't back up so bad that you need a crossing guard to actually stand there and direct traffic.
I understand the theory, but the reality is when you have a regular stopping of traffic, it affects traffic flow, that, that's my point, I mean, even at Bartlett in Pinnardville. You know, it, it affects the traffic and, and they probably weren't aware.
Yeah, they'll probably still need a crossing guard because of, for children to cross, you know, with the stopping, stop guard.
I have a comment also, I have a German lead hood and I'm just imagining myself heading north on Main Street, taking a right heading east on Elm and that crossing path being so far back, I don't know if that would be out of, would that be kind of out of sight?
Like out of vision, maybe you couldn't see around it?
Yeah, so in other words, I whip it around that corner and, oops.
Visibility issue on the crosswalk.
I don't have a beamer.
Strada Jag, sorry. Visibility of crosswalk.
Are you saying with the crosswalk there or with?
Yeah, it's just, it's kind of far back, because now if you're heading north on Main Street, you, you really have a clear vision of, of that entire crosswalk. But if you're setting that far back, just like going up High Street.
Yeah, high and mass.
I mean, it's just so easy to kind of.
Yeah, if you're making the right on Elm, you almost do have a sight on it, but I see where the Main Street to Elm, right, you really don't have, you, you're right, I'd be, you'd be accelerating, like if you were on a motorcycle or anything.
Right, it's like a.
You'd be changing your clutch.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the case on all of those crosswalks, you know, you're, you're on the acceleration side of it, but really you have to put it in those locations.
But.
But when you're coming in from here, the angle is in, you can see a little straight, it's, you can't see around the corner.
Right, that's the point, you can't, it's just, it's just the visibility for that, you don't see it until after you've made your turn. The other ones you see as you approach the intersection, that one you do not, I think, Brian.
There are near misses all the time for people getting rear-ended as they try and turn into the bank.
I bet.
The first parking lot, always.
Yeah, the, the bank, people trying to turn into the bank will stop because there's too much traffic coming this way and people zipping around the corner will practically rear-end them.
Take that right and you're going, and then someone stopping in front of you, you better be, and it's, I guess it'd be better to run into a car than someone crossing the street.
What if we made this whole thing cobblestone, I mean, you ever drive in Nantucket, it's terrible, I mean, everybody, everybody would go, everybody would go slow over this whole thing if the whole thing was cobblestone.
That might be cheaper too, just rip up the pavement, make it all cobblestone.
Cobblestone with a whole thing.
Why even have stone?
Gravel.
You don't have enough space to catch enough speed.
That would comp traffic. It'd make downtown more quaint.
We can use horses to. All the snow of the winter.
Bring the engine posts back, right?
How about using Elm Street the way it is, this drawing with just the yellow and then just doing one roundabout by High, by High Street, maybe even a grassy one.
You know, I was surprised, Brian, maybe you can address this, but I was surprised there was no option with only a roundabout at the bottom of High Street.
Single roundabout?
Single roundabout.
They have looked at that and it still leaves the issue of the other intersection, because they're so separated, you have issues with making that other intersection work still properly and you really couldn't join them up because of the way they're configured into one. But, so you'd have one roundabout maybe at one intersection, then you'd have to somehow figure out the way that the other one interacts with that other one, which isn't optimal either. I think they, they have looked at it, but.
The, the front lawn of the library, not that I don't want to touch anything, but the building is historic, but is the, is the, is the front corner, the.
Historic.
The grass is historic.
Is it historic?
I don't, I don't know that the grass itself is historic.
So something could be done on that front yard, because the library now has a lot of land out back and off to the side.
I do know that whenever you do stuff close to a historic property, you always have to consider the impacts to that property. And Phil could probably address that way better than me, because he's our resident historian in the town, but.
It's been here longer.
Sorry, good.
Anyway, yeah, it's.
Well, some of these proposals do take some of the land in front of the library.
And I know there's people with opinions that, you know, you shouldn't touch the land of the library in the grass in the front, because, you know, that's sacred, you know, well.
Okay.
I mean, that's one of the.
They prerogative.
That's their idea, I don't know.
Brian, I think you can be, you can rest assured that no matter what happens, people will be upset with it.
This is definitely a lose-lose.
I don't have a problem with that, I think that's, I think that's one of the reasons I brought it up, there's a certain inevitability about something happening.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, you can pick the path of least resistance or you could pick a really good idea, hopefully you find something in the middle, you know.
Right.
A little mini roundabout isn't bad, I can see a lot of people's concerns, but this.
I think that's a terrific idea, find some sweet spot, you know, where, where it might be accessed.
Actually, yeah, maybe what you should make everything right-hand turn only and make this one way, so that you can only go, you can't make any left turns.
No left on high, yeah.
No left turns.
You could go back around.
You have to go all the way back around or some, I don't know, wait a minute, I need more, I need more land.
You'd need a roundabout at the end of each of those.
Yes.
In order to do however lo- however long you want to do it.
Yeah.
You're good, thank you, thank you for bringing this to us.
Now, if you put a, what happens if you put like a flagpole in the middle of these little roundabouts here, is that gonna slow, is that gonna?
No, they still drive through it, that's the one at the high school.
Are you volunteering to raise and lower the flag every day?
Scott.
For what?
Light on it.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, they drive through it with it. And don't get me going on flagpoles that are.
There's a moneymaker right there.
Mr. Jay, can I bring up something quick coming in tonight?
Yes, you can, Brian, you all, you're all set with this?
Thank you for all your help.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Yes, the, the DOT meeting, I know, you know, talking about obviously Exit Seven and extending it to Goffstown Back Road, the benefits of that and how, I guess, eight, nine years ago, when the planning board approved the industrial park out there and I guess Manchester slapped a no trucking thing on it. I think it'd be good to revisit that, is there, how would we go about asking Manchester to revisit that and maybe lift that? You know, there's a new mayor, very pro-business mayor in town, from Manchester.
I believe Scott already tried, didn't he?
We've, we've made those attempts.
Oh, have you, recently, okay.
I met with.
So I actually met with the, some of the aldermen in Manchester and Clarkworm has gone over there as well.
How recently?
I, I actually tried starting that discussion and I think it sort of got the ball rolling a little bit, but it was within the past year.
Okay.
I started that conversation with Alderman Griasso a year or two ago and he said, no way, it won't happen.
There is not particular interest in Manchester in fostering economic development anywhere.
In Goffstown.
Even the whole, the new employees are gonna eat in your shops, go to your ballgames, all that, you know.
There's a couple of houses there that's holding that whole thing up.
Southern New Hampshire Planning has hosted meetings on municipal sharing of resources in regards to contracts and et cetera, and Manchester has not attended.
And I'm sure they're spinning it, because the reality is, best case scenario, there's what, fifteen trucks a week, twenty trucks a week? I mean, best case scenario, we get what, three businesses to go into the next handful of years and.
Have you looked at the plan, it's actually pretty substantial.
Yeah, it's.
No, I know, but I'm talking about in the immediate future, in the immediate future, and.
It's a big industrial park, there'd be more trucks going in there.
Well, over time, but.
That's why Exit Seven is critical.
I couldn't agree more.
To the future of Goffstown.
I don't know if Manchester was thinking it was gonna be like a hundred trucks going through there.
Right, we need a connection.
And a connection down, right, yeah, it's critical, I mean, we.
Oh, no, I agree, that's why.
The fire station has a heck of a hell.
It's all part of that.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and just to, Monday night, selectmen's meeting, they are having another public hearing on the land that's up for donation to the town. on the, uh, land that's up for donation to the town. So anyone out there willing, wishing to come and speak on it, please, uh, come to the selectmen's meeting Monday night at six o'clock, seven o'clock.
Well, the meeting starts at six, but the agenda's not out yet for that.
Okay, so sometime between six and.
Where's the land?
There's this five or six yards out right in back of the town hall. No, the, it's the second public hearing, so. Second the motion to adjourn.
Let's talk about that after.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, and he knows.
John goes, he's, he could be speaking on the.
Abstentions.
I thought for sure eight-thirty would be it.
Seven to zero, we're.
I was hoping.